School district meeting to order? And if you will please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second by Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number three, superintendent's report. Since Mr. Stokes isn't here, Dr. Delphin, would you please take over?
Absolutely, thank you President Wilkie, members of the board. Great to see everybody tonight. I'll probably say it a few times, happy new school year. We are starting the year with students next Monday, the 18th. With that, I'd like to firstly nominate Superintendent Stokes and his beloved bride for Parents of the Year. Knowing that he has married three out of his four children in less than one calendar year, holy cow. Congratulations, and he needs some kind of award, I would think. I've not ever heard of that in my life, so Richard, drive home safely. So we'll see him tomorrow. And with that, we also appreciate all of the parents who have enrolled their kids online on our new online registration system called InfoSnap. We know it's new and it's not perfect, and so we ran into a few glitches this week. That said, our gracious Director of Information Technology, Mrs. Arthur Towns, has been on it and just really taken care of business in the background. So I thank her and her staff, and including Mrs. Kima's staff, to get out there and troubleshoot for all kinds of reasons. It'll get smoother, so we know that. Just, I thank all the parents for their patience in advance here. With that, we also, if you are needing some face-to-face help with the online registration for students, we just want you to know, we have help available at Carson High from 7:00 to 3:30 every day. And then, the middle schools from 8:00 to 2:30 every day, and then the elementaries from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. every day. And then, I'm sure you've heard about it by now, but we have a nationally renowned speaker. I'm going to hold this up for the camera. Mr. Jamie Vollmer, who will be here at the community center all day tomorrow. And so the public is invited to attend at the 1:00 session. I have heard him speak, he's a great speaker, he's quite inspirational. So staff and community are welcome to be there, of course. Please come on down. Did I say school's starting on Monday for kids? I'm happy because my kids are starting school too, so just so you know that. My kids are like, yeah, thanks dad, thanks a lot. We do have a plethora of information for back-to-school nights on our website. So parents and guardians and everyone, please make sure you check CarsonCitySchools.com for all the latest news and announcements there. And just a shot in the arm, literally, we have a back-to-school shot clinic sponsored by the Health Department. I know, sorry, terrible joke there. Walk-in bases on August 11th through the 15th. And the hours at the Health Department are on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1:00 to 4:30 p.m. And then Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30, and then they take a little break on Thursday and then come back from 1:00 to 4:30. So get your shots. And then lastly, per Mrs. Kima, we got some feedback today that we had a great turnout at the high school, Carson High for Parent University. We had over 200 parents show up, amazing turnout. Freshmen, chime right in, Mrs. Kima, please. I want to thank our new principal, Principal Fuson, and her staff for rolling out the red carpet for parents in our communities. She's doing a rock and roll job, and we just really appreciate all their hard work in letting the parents know what's going on. And that's my report for now.
Thank you, Dr. Delphin. Board reports, Candace, Steve, Laurel.
Just a couple things for Fritsch Elementary School. They are ready for school, and the kids are already getting excited to learn who their teachers will be. And Wednesday, August 20th, next week, at 6:00 p.m. is the kindergarten parent night. And Friday, August 22nd, at 8:30 a.m. is an ESL breakfast, so families are invited to come to that. And Tuesday, September 2nd, which is the first Tuesday back after Labor Day, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. is the PTA Ice Cream Social and back-to-school night for the specials, computer, library, music. There's one more. PE, yes, I knew it, it just wasn't there. Okay, thanks, that's my report.
Thank you, Joe.
Just real quick, with school coming back in session, I was briefly at the high school and over at Carson Middle School this week. And at Carson Middle School, the leadership kids are hard at work already. There was a whole cafeteria full of them, getting ready for the incoming sixth graders and helping the staff get ready for the school year. So that was pretty exciting to see. And then at the high school, the culinary kids already had their first catering event. They were, I think it was for the new teachers. And so they did, I think, soup and salad bar for the new teacher orientation. So everybody's hard at work, here we go.
Ron?
Just a little follow-up from the last board meeting, which Richard had said he was going to, or he put together a meeting for the Carson City School District Foundation. And Steve was there, Laurel was there. Just to give you a little update, it was really, it was good. Richard and Valerie just did a tremendous job. There's going to be a follow-up meeting because a lot of people were unable to attend before school. People were on vacation and things like that. But of the people that were there, there was a tremendous amount of enthusiasm to get the foundation going. It was, like was talked about, it was established in 2003, never really activated. And there were a handful of people there that said, let's do it, they'll do the work. And the intent, the purpose was to fund projects, programs, and activities that wouldn't ordinarily be funded out of the general fund for our kids in this district. The roadmap for doing this was, is our strategic plan. And all were in agreement, let's get it going. So I just want to report that to the board, and it was just a tremendous first start. And, I don't know, Steve, Laurel?
Thank you. I stopped by Carson High and Mark Twain yesterday while they were doing their online registration and all was well. Janice, big kudos, they said that there was a couple of problems, but they called the guy and he took care of the form, and it's amazing. So everybody's pretty happy. Carson High had 600 when I left, but Fritsch only had four, so. But Mark Twain had a bunch today, so. And they were all laurels, those four were laurels.
No surprise.
That's all I have on the school. Oh, and then the Carson Football Booster Club is having their annual Hall of Fame induction on August 23rd at 6:00. Tickets are sold through Carson High Football Booster Club or Brent Andreas, who has an insurance agency here in town off of Washington Street. So it's always a fun event. You can hear all the old war stories. Going on to Nevada Association of School Boards, we had our meeting in Winnebago this time, last weekend. Yeah, last weekend. And went on a mine tour, which was really, really interesting. And then they took us up for lunch and they showed us a slide, and it's a slide that every math teacher in the district should have because they flipped up this slide and they showed all the math that you use being in mining, from being a mechanic all the way to being one of the geologists. And so, there's like 15 series. And then they showed, the next slide was, if you have a regular degree, you're making between 25 and 40,000. And if you're in the mines, you're making 80,000. So it might be something good to be put in that career center that we have. So that was interesting. And then, of course, we always have our professional development and just happen to be on board and superintendent relations. It had been planned for many months, believe it or not, but we did have somebody there for WashU to give us a totally different degree of how that works. But it was really good. And I have the, I have the four awards that we figured out for us. If anybody else has award nominations, let me know. I'm going to send these around with the payroll things, if you guys can all just sign them. And if you want to see copies, I can email you mine, and then Ron's working on one too. So I did find out, the more signatures you have, the better off we are, so that's why I'm sending these around. And then the conference, the annual conference is going to be in November in Vegas, and you've probably received some information on that, but it'll be at Green Valley. And I'll have more as we go on.
I'll need some information on that, so I'll get their registration.
Okay, so I'll get stuff to Renee, so you guys can all get it. Okay, moving on to association reports. Come on, Ms. Gilli.
I'll be short, I am short. Good evening, I'm Casey Gillis, and I'm here speaking for all the administrators in the district. First of all, I probably should have gone into mining, but it's too late now, so I'll stick with education. I just want, as we start a new year, I just want to say thank you to the staff that worked over the summer. The operations, the maintenance, the custodians, nutrition, who worked all summer to have our schools ready to start next week. Looking good, everything ready to go. A special thanks to the technology people. They have been in our schools all summer, doing what looks to be very mundane work over and over to get things ready, all the computers and laptops. So I wanted to give our appreciation to them. And then I want to say a welcome to all the new and the current educators and support staff in the district. We're looking forward to, I think, a really exciting year. And looking forward to tomorrow morning here at the community center, I think it'll be a great kickoff. And then I just want to mention that even though Fird Mariani doesn't retire till the end of the month, the association is having his retirement dinner on the 16th. And our purpose is to honor Fird Mariani for a long and successful career. There's no one I know of who wants to see him go, but it is his choice. So we just publicly want to wish him well on the next stage of his life. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank the administrators too, you guys put in a lot of hours and stuff over the summer too, and we appreciate it. It's going to be a great school year.
It is.
Madam President? Out of curiosity, I've heard technology a couple of times. Did I read somewhere where Ms. Townsend was? Yeah, maybe somebody who's more familiar with the details, Mr. Delphin or Susan could actually tell us exactly what that was.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Mrs. Towns was recognized in a national magazine for her contributions, and she can tell you what magazine that was, or what publication.
It was E-Week, and it was basically, they interviewed me for a large-scale rollout.
You know, I have to tell you, the more I'm in this district, we have administrators, we have teachers, we have students, and nobody pats themselves on the back. And we have so many great people that, I'm glad that Mr. Reynolds brought that up because it's very important that we let everybody know what a great district this is. Moving on to number six, public comment. This is the time that the public can come up, and you have three minutes to talk about anything that is not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record. And Mr. David Carter, sorry, would you like to come up?
Before I begin on my comments, I just also want to offer thanks to all of those who provided food and clothing and whatever else was provided that was given to the LDS Church in their cultural hall. It was brought over Friday, and Saturday morning, the cultural hall was full. And as I understand, was pretty much wiped out by the end of the day. So a lot of our students were able to get supplies that they may not have otherwise had. So thank you to the staff and to the community who provided those items. I have copies here I would like to give to the members of the board when I'm finished. My comments today are addressed to, in relation to Common Core and my opposition to it. I printed out an article that I got off of Fox News this last week. I had checked to see if it was in ABC, NBC, all of the other news sites, and could not find it. But it made a comment that the new curriculum standards for the AP History program are leaving out such American icons as Benjamin Franklin, Martin Luther King, and paints colonists as bigots and glosses over the greatest generation's fight to save the world from Germany. And I would also add that it does not mention some other people that could have been on here too, whether you think, whatever you think of their politics. We have our current president, our first black president, and also our first presidential candidate from Hawaii. We had Mrs. Palin, our first presidential candidate from the state of Alaska. We had Geraldine Ferraro, our first female vice presidential candidate. And there's others on both the conservative and the liberal side of the icon that were not mentioned. One of the things that he, the article mentions in here, you're not going to find Thomas Jefferson and the house's burgesses, and the credal of democracy. You're not going to find Benjamin Franklin and the birth of American entrepreneurialism. You're going to find very little on the Revolutionary War and on General George Washington. Continuing, there's, it presents American history as one long story of groups in conflict. It does not focus on individuals at all. The idea seems to be that the only force in history worth considering is the group identity, and all of these groups are in constant conflict according to the particular narrative. This came out after I had made a short presentation at the board meeting of the legis, or actually, the meeting of the Legislative Committee on Education last Tuesday. And a member of the college board made a short presentation after me and did not deny any of the things that were on here, but indicated that it is still a work in progress. And so I understand that it'd be hard for us to be able to, as a school district, be the only school district to not take it. But it would be interesting to see how many other school districts have similar concerns, whether from the left or the right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other public comment? Moving on to number seven, informational update on the Carson City School District Race to the Top Grant. For discussion only, Dr. Perdare.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Really pleased to be here today. Mr. Stokes asked in my presentation that we focus on a couple of items tonight. One being the kind of feedback that we've been receiving from the U.S. Department of Education. And I'll give a quick summary of our implementation plan for this year. And then, our second item will be the freshman transition class. And Candy Ruff was going to come up at that time and provide you some more information about where that particular project is. So we've been working very closely with the U.S. Department of Ed this last year, and we're getting ready to present our first report to them, which will go into all the elements that we have completed so far, which is really a culmination of all the presentations that I've been making to you since we started this project a year and a half ago. And that will also include the budget. Our focus for this coming year is, I've provided a map for you, and you have it in front of you as well. This will be really the emphasis on each one of the four campuses, and each one is in a little bit different stage of development, just based on the size of the campuses. So the first box there in the upper left-hand corner is really the curriculum, instruction, and assessment development, which we were working on most of last year, including the adoption of the Mastery Connect program, which we started in February at the middle schools and will be adopting at the high school later this year. The middle school curriculum and assessments are virtually ready to go and will be fully implemented this year. The high school is going to be developed as you go for this first semester. And then by semester, all the curriculum and assessment will be done for them as well. So with the 251 different courses, that's a pretty monumental effort. We were hoping to be ready to go right now, but just the scope of the work and the time, we had to go a little bit slower, but we'll make sure that the product is strong. The real emphasis is to the classroom. And so in this next box, the focus for our administrators and our teachers is really about the teacher-student relationship. And so we have an administrative professional development component this year that is really going to focus on supervising the individual classroom. Giving administrators and teachers an opportunity to really reflect on the pieces of the classroom that they observe. For example, prior to this year, at the secondary level, we were really limited in the amount of information the principal or vice-principal would have when they would have a walkthrough. Now what they have is, they do have the course summary document, which are all the key components. They have the learning guide, which addresses that three-week unit. They'll pull in the common unit assessment at the end and a lesson plan, all laid out prior to entering the classroom. So in other words, they're really clear about what the learning expectations are and being able to go in and gather information about that, so that the teacher and the administrator are really on common ground. And it'll provide a great opportunity for the teacher to reflect about the experience. And one of the neat parts about the situation is, we're going to ask our administrators to talk to the students. And one of the key pieces is, can the student define the learning expectations for themselves? Can they define how far they are along the learning continuum? And what are the next steps for them to meet mastery in that particular unit? So what we're trying to do is empower students to advocate for themselves in every one of their classes in every one of the content areas that they have. So you see that we're really kind of building this relationship between the teacher and the student, and we're making it transparent. The next item is the professional learning community. So if we're going to drop down to that bottom left-hand corner there, that same conversation we had about the individual classroom is now we can have about our professional learning communities. Because they too will have the exact same data that we just talked about. So for the first time, they all have common assessment results, they have Mastery Connect results, and they're going to be able to look at and determine, wow, six of us all have Algebra I, and these are the common assessment results, we're all going to test within a week or two of each other. And now, what went well, what didn't go well, who needs to reteach, who doesn't. Some groups have already talked about reconfiguring their classes if they're taught at the same time, where one teacher takes this component, another takes this component, so that they're really able to differentiate based on the needs of the individual student. So in essence, we're really getting to begin to apply the learner-centered model to the classrooms and to the collaboration between the teachers that teach common classes. Our next box over is really about the data systems that have all been built. So we'll be sharing with you the graduation tracker, which has been finished for Carson High. And the graduation tracker tells us the number of credits earned at every grade level and every content. So it essentially lays it out for us in a map. And we can tell how many credits have been earned, how many are not, whether a kid is deficient or whether they're not, all the way through for all of Carson High School, all of Pioneer High. And then that matches our middle school data because our data matrix provides us the same information. So that information will be available and usable right away. The high schools will look at their current credit accrual and then plan for any interventions for students who are deficient. So when I come back to report to you next time, we'll let you know what their plans are, what percentage of kids are deficient, and then how they plan to, by the end of the year, move all of those kids up to being on time. Which is a really transparent approach, we've never been able to do that before. A couple other really neat components that we're really looking at is that Mastery Connect information. And so this is back to that, I don't know if you remember, but when I was about here a year ago, I really talked about this transparent information. And so, for the first time, our teachers and our students and our parents are all going to end up with entrance into Mastery Connect. Now, we've had Power School, that's a grade. Mastery Connect lists the standards and whether the students have, or the learning targets, as we've defined them, and whether the students have mastered each one. So over the next few months, first at the middle schools, then on to the high school, we're going to open that access up to parents as well. So they'll be able to see, the students will be able to see, the principal, the teachers, which standards have been mastered in each class. So it's a true transparency and a transparent access, and we know that that'll create leverage to improve the opportunities for those kids. So when I think of it from a teacher's perspective, it's fantastic. Because if you have 30 kids, there's always a kid or two in there that has a way to kind of say, oh yeah, I get it, I get it. But then you look at the test results, it's like, wait a minute. Now you answered this part right, and I saw it in class, but you didn't know it on the test. Well now, there's no hiding. The data's right there, we know which ones, and anytime it comes up that a kid has a red box, we'll call it, then that teacher knows exactly what the intervention needs to be. It helps me as a parent as well, once I learn the access, because if I want to provide tutoring for my students, it tells me exactly what the target is and what they need support in. So again, transparent access to our curriculum. So by mid-year, that'll be fully operational on both, all campuses, the middle schools right away, and then the parent access should happen by mid-October. So we're moving relatively quickly. Last box is the Student E-Portfolio. And believe it or not, that's as big a rollout as our curriculum component. And so we're ready to begin that process. We have got all the paperwork in, and we have the agreement going with Career Cruising. And so that is going to be our product, and we're now getting ready to go through the adoption process with them. So in about a week and a half, we'll start the orientation where we're going to pull Power School in. And there's quite a few components that we have to address, but essentially, what'll happen, our two things are going to be in place. The first one I just talked about, which was the student ability to know where they are in every class using Mastery Connect. The second is the Student E-Portfolio, which is their pathway from middle school, high school, onto college. And what'll happen with the E-Portfolio is there's multiple sections. One is, students are really going to select their course pathway, and we're going to use our freshmen as kind of the peak. So they're going to go the fastest, and then we're going to push out a rollout, both up and down at the same time. What'll happen for our freshmen is, they're going to What'll happen for our freshmen is they're going to be selecting their career pathway, and I'm going to have Candy talk a little bit about that in just a minute. So I'm not going to say too much until she has a chance to speak. But essentially, one is selecting the career pathway, and then the system is going to track what you've completed. So parents can access, and students can access 24 hours a day, what is their schedule, and then what have they completed. So it's really kind of a quicker look at the E-Portfolio, but it's individualized, or I mean, the graduation matrix I talked about earlier, but it's for the individual student. And then each semester, that data will upflow, and that'll be completely accurate and ready to go. It also provides us a way to track for the FAFSA, the SAT and ACT. Let's see. And then we are looking at different aspects of it. There's a Canadian system that we're looking at a piece of for the job placement. They actually have a really strong, this is a Canadian-based company, and it has a really strong component for that job placement. And so we'll look at that as we move forward to see if that's a good match for us. So Candy, let me have you come up, because the freshman transition class is part of this talk, and I'm going to let Candy talk about that part of it.
I'm Candy Ruff, Implementation Specialist for Pioneer High School and Carson High School. I wanted to share some information, a walkaway document with you. So in your handouts tonight, you have the pacing guide that was created this year, two weeks ago actually, with freshman transition teachers. So you'll be able to see what they're, what actually the students will be doing week by week in that class. And then a copy of the learning guides, which is the unit plan, that students will also have a copy of. So I know that as you speak to parents and speak to each other, you'd like to have a point of reference. And so this is your kind of walkaway document. If you want to review it, take a look at it, see what our students are seeing in the ninth grade, and see what our parents will be seeing back to school night. So first, before I talk about the progress in freshman transitions, I just really want to speak to those five teachers who made a huge commitment to this project, Jen Menefee, Shane Quilling, Misty Harris, Erin Bean, and Steve Dilly. Those are the five freshman transition teachers. They came in 18 months ago and were part of a huge 40-person discussion about what this class could look like and how it was going to serve our students. And they have been with us in the planning and in the implementation since then. And they continue to be very committed to the evolution of the progress. Last week, we worked on some revision of documents. They worked two days over the summer, because they're committed to their instruction, committed to their curriculum. They're also very committed to the mobile one-to-one technology. They presented to Ms. Towns and Mrs. Kima and Mrs. Morris, and really advocated for themselves to take those devices that were extra at the middle school, bring them to Carson High School, and provide a continuum of service for freshmen coming in. So they've received Edmodo training, and they've received Google Documents training, and they are ready to roll out, so that our freshman students have the continuum of that until they get their mobile one-to-one devices in February. So I think that's just a huge commitment on their part. We also went back, and we kind of redefined, looked at what our focuses would be for the year. I know that there are, there were some initial thoughts that we had that perhaps were not as clear initially. So we redefined what freshman transitions would be. The first unit in freshman transitions is really that, what does it mean physically in terms of navigation and policy and procedure and resources at Carson High School? What does that look like? It's a huge transition to high school, and those teachers really felt like that was important information that students needed to have. So that's our first unit. It's called CHS Roadmap. The second and third unit really are, were created as an opportunity for students to review and refine their personal skills, which we know is a challenge for teenagers. I don't, we almost have teenagers. Personal skills are a problem sometimes, a challenge. Also, and their academic skills. What do good academic skills look like as you transition to high school? So those are our second and third units. Our fourth unit is really that opportunity for college and career readiness and an exploration of the career pathways. So with that in mind, they've gone back, looked at all of their learning guides, looked at all of their assessments, done some revision. They're ready to roll out again. There were some changes this year. They really are committed to a better level of communication with their parents and back to school night, and in parent logs, parent emails, so that parents have a better understanding about what is the relevance of this class, why are we doing it, why are we asking students to take it, and what are students going to walk away with at the end. And so we know that there's been a little bit of a buy-in issue. And so they are really committed to talking to parents and guardians about why this is important. The second thing is that they know that there were some curriculum and assessment issues. And so they're committed to the revision and the refinement in those areas. There are some new things that they're rolling out this year. One is that they created a series of six weeks over the 18-week period. They worked with Michelle Lewis, who's the CTE Administrator, and Ben Conti, and the Community Liaison Officer, and created six separate career exploration weeks that matched those six career pathways. There will be multiple opportunities for freshmen and other students at Carson High to get information about those pathways. So on Wednesdays and Thursdays of those weeks, depending on what the block schedule is, students will receive in-class information, guest speakers. But Mondays, there will be an opportunity for them to do something at Western Nevada College. Tuesdays, there's a lunchtime activity. Fridays, and those teachers are committed to making sure that students understand what's available and provide incentives for them to be there. Another change, sorry, there's a lot, there's a lot, is that the freshman transition teachers are now working in partnership with the Carson City Library, and the new position created for Molly Walt in that grant, they're partnering together in using the Digitarium. She's going to come in and teach a series of four lessons that revolve around a public service announcement, which will be eventually about the college or career pathway they choose and their program of study. So we're taking the technology that they're working on, working in partnership with the library. Molly is committed to having kids come. She's committed to the lesson planning. It's going to be a really nice partnership. The third thing is that those freshman transition teachers will be a part of the, we're a part of, Jen Menefee and I were a part of the Career Cruising choice, to make sure that there was a match there in the needs of freshman transitions and the product that we were choosing. And they will be a part of the rollout, so that we make sure that the technology that we've chosen and the pathway that we've chosen meets with their needs and they have the appropriate training. And the last thing is that this year, there will be a commitment to the Student-Like Conference, which will culminate the freshman transitions experience at the end of December. We're going to work with Counselor PLC, the seven-through-nine Counselor PLC, to create opportunities for those kids to share their program of study, the career pathway they've chosen, and also provide the counselors with some opportunity to talk to parents at that time. So we really feel like we've created a course that has a high level of relevance, a high level of accountability, and really a high level of transparency.
Any questions?
That's a lot of information. They said I had five minutes.
I'm glad to see the Student-Like Conferences are going into the ninth, now that we've had a couple of years. I think those kids are used to it.
And in eighth grade, they're ready. I mean, in eighth grade, they've done it. So I think the kids are certainly ready to do it. And the partnership between freshman transitions and the counseling department is there. It's just about the, how does that look?
That'd be a great way to get parents in there. How many, approximately, how many freshmen do we have coming in? Do you know?
No. Last year, we had over 600. So I know it's a smaller number this year, but I haven't seen the enrollment data.
It's probably not complete yet, anyway, with our new online.
500-ish.
Okay, thank you.
If you are talking to parents as you're reviewing the documents, if you have a thought, if you have a question, I would just, would be really happy to talk to you about it as you think about it. You're welcome to contact me by email. You can call me at Pioneer. I'm happy to share. So there you go. Now I'm at six minutes, sorry.
Mrs. Ruff, thank you for that great report. I want to also reiterate what excitement these learning targets are. I'm just reading number one, "For Personal Skills," Unit Two, "I can understand how proper sleep, diet, and exercise influence academic achievement." Oh, wow. Good stuff. Really relevant for all our kids. Thank you.
So one additional piece, and I would just want to remind the board that we have realigned our math curriculum. So this year, all freshmen will be in Algebra I or higher, which means that they will all be on pace for entering college without remediation by earning a C or better in those classes. So, all right. Any other questions?
Any questions for Steve? No. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Appreciate it. Oh, wait, Ron's got one.
Go ahead. U.S. Department of Ed?
U.S. Department, where are we? Are they coming out to observe this?
So what, right now, we're at a year-end report, and so they will be coming out to observe us at some point in time during this year. We have been, we've met with them four, three times already, and then we've gone over each one of the components of the grant. They are very pleased at where we are right now, in terms of what we're reporting back. We've met the obligations for all the components up to this point. We are meeting the timelines that they have set for us, and in fact, we're ahead in some cases. As I mentioned to you, we're a little bit behind in the curriculum piece, but our teachers are already working to implement it. So we're ahead there. Again, we're still early in the stages. Some of the other districts, say, in Florida, Dade County, Miami, they had one single issue, which was they're going to redesign the buildings and bring in computers. There, that is the one group that's probably ahead of us. But besides that, we are implementing at a pace equal to or exceeding the other 16 applicants. So we're on time. Yeah.
How much detail do you provide them? You know, like with the curriculum and the, you know, the standard, should we say, the uniform curriculum across the board? I mean, is that all sent back to them?
Yes.
And they've reviewed all of this?
Yes. So I send back to them each time the, our reports, so you can get an access to the reports that we send them, or information we send them, just by going to our website. So on our website, the six quarter, or there's five quarterly reports posted, the sixth one is going up. Those are the same reports that we send back to the U.S. Department of Ed. And then when we talk to them on those, on the phone calls about every quarter, I send back to them the raw data dealing with the curriculum. We have curriculum tracking documents. Those two different series, we send every quarter. So, yep.
In your discussions, you know, we're into the second year, or toward the end of the second year. Going forward, you know, if they're pleased so far of what they've gotten, when they observe, I'm sure they're going to be even more pleased as to what it does for education. Has there been discussions on this successful academic program? What's the next step? Will this be suggested and shared with other school districts? What are the discussions going forward?
So that part, I can't really speak for the U.S. Department of Ed. So how they're proposed to share the information, I don't know what's in mind for them. What's important for us is for us to begin to advertise ourselves in terms of the things that we accomplish. And then as more and more components come into play, we, and performance follows those performance components, then we think that there'll be a natural momentum for others to start looking and copying our model. And again, the complexity of our application along with the others, it'll be near the end of the process before the data starts to match, and they can begin to start looking, just because it's so complex and you need historical data. But we will have some really good things that we're going to be able to show, which is, of course, our change in our curriculum, the tracking tools that show our credit accrual for kids. And we anticipate, as that becomes transparent, more credits will be earned, more kids will be taking college classes, since we have Jump Start College, and more with CTE. So those are all things that we can control. As I told you before, it's outside the realm of our state assessment system, and we're kind of in the middle of that, as you know. It'll be a while before that state data is going to be useful for us because of the historical change. CTE went out as of last year, and then the new S-Back Assessment will come on this year. So we're really at ground zero. And then next year, will be our first year implementing. We'll react, and hopefully we'll be close in alignment. And then the year after that, we'll start pulling in data that we can start looking in comparison. So that's kind of where we are. Go ahead, Al. I'm ready for any questions you might have.
No, no, no. This is just, you know, congratulations to you and all of the implementation specialists. You know, this one, that's a tremendous amount of work, as well as everybody. It sounds like it's not just 712, it's a whole community of teachers involved in this process.
Yeah, so let, yeah, I really want to reinforce that, too, because it is our teachers and our teacher teams and our implementation specialists working together at the secondary, but also at the elementary level, because you know that work is going on in science now, and it's going on in math, and it's been going on in ELA for a while. So it is a K-12 commitment by our teachers and our staff, support staff. And it's, and we're starting to reap the benefits of the change. And the other thing is, is that, again, as I told you guys before, the change is unheard of. We've asked our teachers to change everything they do, the way they take a perspective of their job, and they are continuing to be reinforced, and they continue to have a positive outlook, and they continue to push hard to make things better. And they're moving at a face pass, moving at a pace faster than we probably expected them to, and they continue to grow at a faster pace. So we really appreciate those efforts.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. I really appreciate it.
On to number eight, informational update on the full-day kindergarten program in the Carson City School District, for discussion only. Mrs. Kima.
Susan Kima, for the record, and I believe this will be another uplifting agenda item. We've had kindergarten full day for one year now, so I want to provide you with an update. I will cover some data points, and then we have a host of teachers here. I'd like to have them come up and tell you what it was like to go from half-day to full-day. They're the ones that are out in the field, working with those students every day, and I felt that their thoughts tonight would be very beneficial for you. So first of all, oh, too fast. First of all, an overview. The last legislative session, lawmakers passed that a bill, 522, and they set some priorities in that bill. First of all, they provided the district's funding to go with full-day kindergarten. You can see the amount that was given to our district. The rules were set that the schools, they had to start with schools that had the highest free and reduced numbers. The flexibility to that was that if you have a school that already had full-day kindergarten through a previous state grant, you could go on to the next level. We had already had full-day kindergarten at Empire through a previous, a current state grant, so we started with Mark Twain, Boarderwick, and then down, over to Fremont. At that time, our district made a decision to go with full-day kindergarten across the board. So we added in, of course, Fritsch and Seliger as well, and went with all six schools. The SB 522 required student ratios to be at 21 to 1, but the flexibility there was the superintendent could sign in student ratios up to 25. No more flexibility after that. So our ratios, which were applied at the school level, that was another requirement, and were monitored through the consent agenda each quarter. Seliger ratios ran 18, 19 to 1 throughout the four quarters, and Fritsch and Empire ratios ran 23 to 1 throughout the four quarters. Everybody else was at about 21 to 1. So that's some information. The other piece to that, for you to know, is in the public, is that when this was rolled out, we utilized our existing facilities. So we didn't need to purchase any new modules. We didn't need to build something, maybe put up a wall or make sure those students had access close to a bathroom. But we did not need to expand outside the current facilities that we had. All right. The next data, so the first data point I'm going to show you is about proficiency in reading. And this data point is comparing the students that entered kindergarten in 2013 to the students that entered kindergarten in 2014. So it is our reading data through our Success for All Reading Program, comparing those students that were in half-day to our first full-day group. So the students in the orange, you can see in the first quarter, 17% of those students were on grade level in the first quarter. were on grade level in the first quarter. And by the end of the year, in 2013, 67% of our kindergarteners were on grade level. So, you see, there's a lot of growth in kindergarten. Now, fast forward a year, the red is our full-day kindergarten students. By first quarter, they were at 61% on grade level. And then, by the end of the year, the fourth quarter, there were 87% of our kindergarteners were on grade level. And what grade level means to kindergarten is that they have oral expression, that they've increased their vocabulary, that they've got beginning reading skills to include phonemic awareness, and then skills such as sound blending as they move in, on, in the year. They also should be able to read and write their letters. This test that we used each year is the Roots Test, which is our first-grade test, and that is a combination of reading, which would be word recognition, as well as comprehension. So, this particular data point is our district assessment data for our reading program, comparing two different cohorts of students. The next data point I have to share with you looks a little complicated, but it is our MAP Assessment Data, which is our measures of academic progress. We use this assessment to measure growth. So, this is a data point. The last one I shared with you was proficiency, and this is about growth. We use this assessment in K through ninth grades, and we tend to test them in the fall, and we test in the spring. So, what you see there are three cohorts up there on the screen, and the dotted lines represent the 25th percentile, the 50th percentile, and the 75th percentile. And you want your students, we want our students at the 50th percentile or above. So, looking at the class of 2011, when they entered kindergarten, they were a little bit below average. That first box, what that means is 50% of our students came in above the 48th percentile, and 50% of our students came in below the 40th, 48th percentile. And then, what happens as these students learn, grow, increase their knowledge and abilities, this is a nationally-normed test. So, when we give the assessment at the end of the year, you can see that throughout the year, even though our students are growing, and they're learning, and they're gaining more skills, compared to kindergarteners nationally, across the nation, they're losing ground. We have students at that time with us two and a half hours of the day. We know many states require full-day kindergarten, and they've been doing that 12 years now. So, we're comparing our group. And at the end there, what that would say is 50% of our kindergarteners were at the 34th percentile, above the 34th percentile, or 50% were below that. The next group, you can see, the next two data points, the same thing. You can see where they come in, and then nationally, where we are when they leave. Then, the last two boxes there, you'll see that our students last year came to us a little bit lower than in previous years. 50% of our kindergarteners came in at the 44th percentile, and 50% of our students came in below the 40th, 44th percentile. But what happened at the end of the year is that you can see our downward trend in keeping up nationally, nationally did not happen. We actually made some gains at the end of the year. So, that's our reading data. Our goal next year, we're close enough, our goal next year will be that our students will end at the 50th percentile or above. Okay? So, we made the leap from, you know, that 31 number up to 44, and next year, we'll go higher. This is, looks the same, is the same type of data. It's our MAP data, norm nationally, but for math, so make sure you see that up in the corner there, math. So, our students, same thing, three years of data here. In the first half-day cohort, our students came in, 50% of our students came in at the 44th percentile, and 50% came in below that. You can see the trend. We weren't keeping up. You can see the trend again the next year. And then, now, look at those last two boxes. Those last two boxes represent last year's kindergarteners. They came in a little bit lower. When they came to us, 50% of our students were above the 34th, 37th percentile, and 50% were below that. But you can see with the year-end of instruction, we are at the national norm for math. So, what's been done so far, since I received this information, thank you to Dr. Medina for sitting down, closing us door, and working this out for me. I've been able to share this with each elementary principal, and I need to thank them, because when I was sharing with them was deep into July, and they really should have had time off. But they came in to look and go over both of these data points with me, and we talked about a plan with first grade, because as you can see, when you've got a group of 67% of their students being on grade level, jumping up to 87% of the kindergarteners being on grade level, we're not going to want to lose ground in first grade. So, the principals, we talked about, it was an awareness time, they had, some of them had plans already, they recognized that there was a big change in the data points, and so, some of them had plans, and some of them were making plans. The other piece of information you should know is, I shared this with our elementary curriculum specialists, Tierra Babula for English Language Arts, and Jackie McCune for our math, and they will work with our grade-level reps for math and English Language Arts, and working with them for first grade in particular to address rigor in first grade, because, as you can see here, first grade doesn't need to spend a lot of time on teaching them what a math journal is. They get it, they know it, they can move on. So, we can get through a lot more, we can now increase the rigor in first grade. So, this is very promising data that I think some of the teachers have also seen for the first time tonight. But I would like to turn the presentation over to them, and the question is, is what do Carson City School District professionals think about the change to full-day kindergarten? And I'll start with Kristy Donaldson from Fritsch, and then, we'll move on to Fremont, and then Mark Twain, and they'll come up, introduce themselves, tell you from which school they are, and they have something to say about this change.
I'm sorry, I have it all written down, so I'm just going to read it. I hope you don't mind. I'm a little better with five-year-olds than adults. My name is Kristy Donaldson, and I'm an all-day kindergarten teacher at Fritsch Elementary School. I've had the privilege of teaching for the Carson City School District since 1994, and during this time, I've seen a variety of changes in education, many that have had a positive impact on the education of our community's children. I want to take this time to thank you for providing an all-day kindergarten experience to all of Carson City's eligible students. You have leveled the playing field, and we now have equity in kindergarten. Last year was my first year teaching all-day kindergarten, and up to this time, I taught both morning and afternoon sessions. Fritsch also had a paid all-day class. I did my very best with my half-day students, but due to time constraints, I was unable to fully teach and implement the curriculum. I taught the SFA kindergarten program to both sessions, a program designed for an all-day class and adopted throughout the district. I had two and a half hours to teach a six-hour instructional plan. If this wasn't stressful enough, my classes were expected to make identical growth with the all-day kindergarten class. My assessment data was constantly being compared, and I struggled to make things as equal as I possibly could for my students. It was incredibly frustrating for myself and for the five-year-olds I work with. As I said before, the Carson City School District now has equity in their kindergarten program. I'm able to teach the adopted SFA program the way it was designed to be taught. I'm able to provide a more complete education to my students. I have more time to deepen my instruction of a standard, and I no longer have to skim the surface. Not only were my students less frustrated, but so was I, which was important. As Ms. Kima mentioned, our data shows tremendous growth, which we all like to see. I believe that because of this change to all-day sessions, I am sending on 25 confident, properly-prepared students who are going to be successful in their educational career. Please continue to support our all-day kindergarten program in this district. Thank you.
Well, that's going to be hard to follow. My name's Laura Redman. I'm a kindergarten teacher over at Fremont Elementary. I've taught half-day for three years, and then, obviously, full-day for one.
I'm Erica Metke. It was my first year teaching last year at Fremont, and I taught full-day kindergarten.
Denise Batten at Fremont as well, and I did one year of half-day, and then, last year was all-day. I just like to start.
We just wanted to talk a little bit about our data, which Su Kima had showed us, shown you a little bit, but we wanted to kind of focus just on our school. And in 2012, 2013, we had 30% of our kids were below grade level for first grade. 21% were at grade level, and 49% were above grade level when they were entering first grade at the end of Kinder. 24 of our students were entering first grade below grade level out of 80 students. At the end of last year, we had only 10% that were below grade level, 10% at grade level, and 80% were above grade level. Eight students are now entering below grade level out of 80 compared to 24 the year before. So, 90% of our students at the end of last year are leaving kindergarten at or above grade level, and that's just, yeah.
I can do writing if you, unless you want to speak the whole time. We can share now.
So, for our writing, Laura and I were speaking about this when we were doing half-day. We were only able to, within the two and a half hours, do writing 30 minutes once a week, and getting really the program moving. Last year, our students were able to write independently by the end of school year, two complete sentences grammatically correct. And I know between the two of us, we were running back and forth, "Look at our book", you know, "Look at this", you know, because we're just so excited to see that growth and the difference between the two school years. And the writing, obviously, was just very noticeably different between the two types of school years.
It was interesting to see the data that Su Kima had shown us on math, because when we taught half-day, our math was 30 minutes a day, and now, it's increased to an hour or more a day. So, it was really neat to see the increase in the data, too. And, as already said, our teaching now can go beyond just introduction. We can move into practice and independent mastery, which we never got to before. It was just a lot of introduction and go home and pray that, you know, that they'd get it in their homework. We are now able to incorporate number talk, math talk. We have more time for small-group instruction and interventions, which was really a struggle before. Rarely had time for that. We've seen, we've seen an increase in their social skills and their relationships with one another. When we have pull-outs due to OT or speech, now, it doesn't really
Impact them.
Impact their instructional time, and we have a lot more time for assessing. Kinder has a lot of assessments.
And it's all one-on-one?
Mm-hmm. A lot of one-on-one assessments. And before, in half-day, it was, it took all day, and it took a lot, it took away from their instructional time. And now, we have time to do that throughout the day, and it doesn't impact their learning. Any questions?
Any questions? Joe, and then Candace.
No, I think the numbers are great. I mean, my wife teaches kindergarten, so I understand what you're going through. What, as we heard before, the ratios, we're keeping them to 25, 25 to 1 or below. Do we have, and that's per school, do we, and this is kind of for Sue as well, do we have any classes that are over 25 to 1? And if so, how are we handling that? And I had a different question, but I just jumped to the front.
No classes over 25. The highest was 23 to 1. The law, the SB 522, the only flexibility it gives in being over 21 to 1 is the superintendent can go up to 25 to 1. That's it. I can't go to the state and ask for any more flexibility than that. We have to kick in more teachers.
And then, just a general question. What, I guess, from a teacher's perspective, what can we do to continue this trend? What, you know, what tools do you need to get these numbers higher? You know, we see the charts where we're creeping up to that 50%, and obviously, I think, sitting up here, we're like, boy, how do we get over that 50%? And what kind of tools do, can we provide you to, you know, make that additional leap, I guess?
I know. For me personally, I'm TESL endorsed, and having computers that work in my classroom would be a great benefit, because I have two computers, one I teach off of, and the other one is just so slow, you just, it just doesn't keep up. So, computers, and I know with, for me, computers would be a great asset in my classroom.
I would also like to interject that, you know, something that would be beneficial we've had in the past, and I know that it's hard with, you know, the way the budgets are and the economy and such, but having a paraprofessional in the classroom with the teacher all day instead of part-time really would be beneficial, because we would be able to do more in-depth with either the students who are above, you know, grade level where they need enrichment, or the students who need to have some kind of intervention done. We would be able to have somebody in the classroom where we could provide more of a small-group instructional setting to help get us over and into the more positive numbers, the above the 50%. So, that would be a great improvement if we could have an all-day, full-time parapro in the classroom as well.
I agree. I agree. Very much.
Sure. My name is Deanna Fine, and I work at Mark Twain. I have taught in Carson since 2004. I taught ESL in third grade for eight years, and this is my second year in kindergarten. Like Denise Batten, I taught two half-day sessions the first year I taught kindergarten, and then, last year was full-day. And that first year, I had, I think, 57 students total, so I was inputting all that data for all of those students, all those parents, all those conferences. It was very difficult to get through the conferences with so many parents, and to meet the needs of all the parents and all the students. So, that was a big factor. I think the difference, my analogy would be the difference between full and half-day is like having a nice, relaxing dinner at Adele's where you can linger and be together with your friends and family and enjoy yourself, or you go into Adele's and hurry, sit down, okay, what do you want to eat? Here's your dinner, now go. I just think it's so much nicer to have kids have time to think and to be together and all those things. One more thing I did want to mention that has been alluded to is the fact that we are sending these kids at grade level now, and I'm really excited to see where this group is going to be next year, the year after that, when they hit the middle school, and we're looking at those scores. I think that this is the biggest bang for our buck, because they're going to be at grade level now, and I imagine, especially with what Dr. Perderr is talking about and through the high school, when they get to the high school, if we can keep this up, I just am really excited to see what's going to be happening with these students, all of our kids in Carson City. So, thank you again.
Candace, do you have a question?
This is huge. I mean, it really is huge. And two, two questions. One, how do we make sure that the state is going to continue funding it? And/or, how do we make sure that we can maybe move to a state that has that has mandatory kindergarten like the other states? Uh, I mean, I think the time has come to start saying, "Why do we still have this discussion in this day and age of, of, you know, should we or should we not have full-day kindergarten?" I think we're beyond that. So what is it going to take for Nevada to step up to the plate, like the other states do, so we're not so disparate on the other scores? And then going forward, you know, we're assuming the state is going to keep funding full-day kindergarten. We know there are some financial impacts a little bit, but how do we know that the state is still going to keep funding and providing that support for full-day kindergarten?
Thank you for your comments. This Friday, the 15th, I'll be with Mr. Stokes and Valerie Dockery up in Reno at UNR for a P3 conference. Governor Sandoval's wife will be there, as well as Steve Cannavaro, who is the mee of the State Department for the curriculum and instruction side of the House over there. I plan to take our data points and have a moment with them, or at least schedule a moment with them, so I can share with them our data points and let them know that it's time for Carson City to step up in this next legislative session if they should need our support. Because we have, we are one of the districts that have had a, a school, a district-wide reading program, so we ca- have some data points from year to year that are the same. Some districts do not have consistent data points, and they implemented those when they implemented full-day, but we had them before that occurred. So we can do a true comparison. So I'm going to, I personally am going to offer that when I go up on Friday. And if I don't get to share the data at that point, then we will, I will set appointments to do so and then offer any assistance. It's, it's going to be the legislative process this year. I think this meeting is timely to share with you the thoughts of our, our staff out in the field. And, um, I do, I do agree with you. I always think of this story, my, um, when my middle daughter entered kindergarten here in Carson City, my niece, same age, in Wisconsin, the state had determined mandatory full-day kindergarten at that time. So I assumed, "Oh, that'll happen here per- fairly quickly." Both girls are going to be 21, um, and now we're talking about full-day here. And it's very exciting, and, um, I will take your comments seriously. And if there's an opportunity for the board to participate, I might be calling on you.
And I think because we are in Carson City and the legislature is in Carson City, I think it's going to be very important for us to have a presence at these, um, educational hearings and, and letting them know the data and stuff. And we have those opportunities all the time. We just have to figure out the dates. And I can get them from Dottie, because I went on that one that we talked about. And so I think we're going to, as a board, if this is what we want, and this is what our district wants, I think we're going to have to step it up as a board and go down there and, and talk and tell them, "This is, you know, this is our data, this is what we're doing, our teachers are all in favor of it." And we're, we're just going to have to make an extra effort, because we are actually here.
Well, on President Wilkie, I would go even further to say that somebody, um, should be preparing the bill draft, whether that's NASB or the legislators. But the bill draft needs to be, if it's not done now, it needs to be done in the next few weeks. Time is of the essence, so.
Okay. I'll try to find out if there's somebody doing that, and if not, we will pursue it.
And President Wilkie, I'll check into that on my end as well.
Thank you. Ron?
Well, I think in, in, in going forward and testifying, certainly, we as board members can testify at committee hearings, but I'll tell you, these teachers are the ones who should be testifying. This is what the legislators, they're going to listen to someone who is doing this, not just somebody who is, you know, maybe on their fringes. I think you, all four, five of you should get ready for this next legislative session, because, because I think what you just presented here is going to go a long ways. And I think it's time that the state of Nevada hears this. So get ready. Thank you.
It's a team effort.
Yeah.
We did have them in mind.
That might be something for you, Andrew, to look at, too, what the fiscal impacts would be to have a parapro in the next budget, just to let us know, so we have a heads-up to look at it.
Laura?
I just wanted to thank our district for doing this. I, I really appreciate Mrs. Donaldson's comments about the equitable, the equity that that extends, because there are many districts around us that have not implemented it to all of their students. And, and to make it where it's non-tuition-based, available to all students is, is really something that I appreciate. And I think it benefits all of our students that way. The other thing I want to bring, point out is a benefit that I, I don't know we've actually seen, but it strikes me that it's a benefit, is an increase in the school security. Because with the full-day kindergarten, you no longer have a drop-off and a pickup in the middle of the day when the campuses are completely open. So I think that's a benefit that we have that may not be something that's tangible, but it's, it's there nonetheless. And I'm, I'm looking forward, I have a kindergartner starting this year, so I'm very excited to see what he does. So, thank you, guys.
Steve?
We got a couple of questions, Susan, but before I get to them, some, you know, one of the other things that can benefit, if we're campaigning for this, which we are, is more than just logic and data points, but the legislators need to know that there's a high level of interest out there. And the more that parents who are enjoying the benefits of full-day kindergarten or other people can talk to the legislators and say, you know, "This was important to my child," so that they see not only, as we say, the, the, the arguments for it, but also the fact that it's of high interest to their constituents. That's the side that needs to be probably as, if not more important than that. I mean, the data points have always been there from the other states. Okay? I mean, this is, it's not news. The full-day kindergarten makes a student a better, progress better. Susan, I've got a couple of questions. First off, of the kids in Carson that are eligible for full-day for kindergarten, how are we doing with the percentage that are, are however, you know, number of students that we have? Any feeling for that?
Right now, are you talking about community-wide?
You know, if we've got 400 students, 400 kids of kindergarten age in Carson, how many of them are coming to, you know? How, how are we doing? How many are coming to school?
Well, we have, today, we have 535 of them. And last year at Count Day, we had 568 of them. So we're, we're enrolling more every day. I know that some facilities in town who have pre-K, where parents will start with their student, their child in, in daycare, pre-K, have full-day kindergarten, so they tend to stay through that phase and then come to us for first grade. Our first-grade numbers tend to swell up. But I think that's part of something that, uh, Board Member Sewell had said before, we need to start surveying those people outside of us to find out who's out there and what do they need to bring them in. So I wanted to be able to have something to say, which we now have that information. Now, I think the next step is to be able to answer your question, to get the census information, see how much, how many students are actually out there, and, and then start looking at, is it that you want to finish out your phase of daycare, pre-K, and ki- full-day kindergarten all in the same setting? Or is there another reason why you're, you're staying and not coming over to us? But more and more are.
How we, how's kindergarten attendance compared to other grades?
Um, hi. You know, that was a data point that I asked Dr. Medina also to look at, because I was wondering if there was a different attendance rate for kindergarten going from half-day to full-day? Did parents make half-day the priority, because it was such a short time? Or did they not make it as much of a priority, because it was only two and a half hours, and they had some other things planned as a family? But it was insignificant. It's, um, going back through my memory, it's like 95% attendance rate, and half-day was like 95-point-something, nine-point. It was nothing significant between the two. They were about in the 95% range. So they were coming then, and they're coming now. We know that there is always a discussion. I'm sure principals have a discussion at some point during the year with the families, saying, "We know kindergarten's not mandatory, but when you sign up for kindergarten in the Carson City School District, you walk through our doors, you're expected to follow our policies and, and regulations." And I'm sure that there's a conversation that is to be held periodically with families about that, because there is a kind of a contradiction there, you know, where it's not mandatory for the state, but yet you signed your child up to come and be with us, so we want you here every day.
Are they all going to be full-day? Because I know last year, we had like one or two places that were half-days.
We had, um, one teacher teaching two half-day sections, and we're going to be all full-day. And, um, that was at Seliger last year, and we have full, four full classes for full-day this year.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you all for coming and sharing. We appreciate your view. Good luck this year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted, I just wanted to invite you to come to my classroom and see it upfront firsthand. I'm at Mark Twain, Mrs. Fine. You're welcome anytime. And the legislature, I'm, I'm happy to have them come see me, too, and spend some time in kindergarten, because it's a lot of fun. Thank you.
And thank you for taking time off your summer. I know you have precious time left.
It's not, it's even less than that, Casey.
That would be the principal counting down.
Moving on to number nine, discussion on proposed changes to the following CCSD regulations. Regulation 219, English Language Learner Program for discussion only. Mrs. Kima.
All right, for the viewing public, I'm still Susan Kima for the record, but for the viewing public, when we put, uh, policies before the board, it requires two readings before the board approves the policy. But what we're talking about tonight is a regulation. A regulation that is not required to be approved by the board, but we always put it before the board for input. So you can see that Regulation 219, English Language Learner Program is the title of the policy, is a complete redo. The original six, six-page regulation was pared down to four pages to eliminate redundancy. The regulation defines vocabulary associated with the English Language Learner Program. It spells out requirements for hiring, training, and evaluating staff, including the English Language Learner design- Program designee, or as many people call them, the ESL teacher, the regular classroom teacher and administrators. The regulation, as we went through the, this complete redo, was in collaboration with Laura Austin as the Title III Director, as well as Mr. Pavlakis. I want to thank you for your help. So at this time, do you have any comments or questions? Laura?
Laura?
Um, just two. On page seven, hiring ESL-certified staff, there's a period missing on that sentence. It may be that it's not showing up because of the draft on there, but I just wanted to make sure there was a period. And then on page eight, evaluations disciplinary or other corrective action, um, there's a colon in it, colon following every other heading, so I'd put a colon there as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Good job. I always like when we can make them less pages. Save some trees.
Smaller font.
Smaller font. I always use a larger ones to make my pages go bigger, but, you know, that was a long time ago. Moving on to number 10, then. Discussion on possible action to approve proposed changes to the following CCSD policies. Second reading of Policy 201, Educational Research. Policy 202, Curriculum Assessment. Policy 203, Course Guides, Policy 206. Guidance Counseling, Policy 217. Evaluation of Educational Programs, Policy 323. Professional Development Opportunities. This is for possible action. Mrs. Kima.
The primary purpose of updating this group of policies is to align them better with the strategic plan and the current work we're doing in the district relating to curriculum assessment and instruction. The suggested changes have been made from the last board meeting, and if you have no other changes, I recommend approval of this agenda item.
Ron?
On the Course Guides, Policy Number 203. And, and I just want to be clear in this, in the second paragraph, each teaching staff member shall conduct the minimum assigned instructional, instructional program in accordance with the curriculum guide. This is going to the, uh, as you pointed out, this is trying to align with the Race to the Top program. And, and I, and that word, the minimum, meaning we can, teachers can go well above that if they choose.
Yes.
But, but the curriculum guides that are being set up are the minimum that, that every, every student will be exposed to.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, do I see a motion?
Move that the Carson City School Board trustees approve the proposed changes to the following Carson City School District policies. Policy 201, 202, 203, 206, 217, and Policy 323. And, including the suggestion made by Ron, and approve August 12, 2014 is the revised date.
Second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You have new policies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on to the agenda item we've all been waiting for, the informational update on staffing for 2014, 2015 school year, including a report on the district's effort to fill vacancies, which we had many. Ms. Dr. Delphin?
Thank you, President Wilkie. Jose Delphin for the record. Again, thank you for having me. Wow, it's, it's been a whirlwind, I got to tell you. We haven't seen this much hiring since, thank you, since our EduJobs slash, uh, for VISA program, or we had a lot of people exit because of that. And so this year, wow, it, it has really, truly been a, a, quite a labor to get everybody going. But let me just share some good stuff here. Fruits of our labor up here on the screen, yesterday's New Teacher Orientation. Just want to share with you, uh, Dr. Carone right there, who was leading the elementary folks in PDC in one room. And the, the theme yesterday was really cool. It's "Bring Your School Swag." So I had to ask my daughter what swag meant yesterday. And she, "It's all about being cool and doing stuff for the spirit of your school." So Empire donated through the, uh, Principal Allred, the Mustang icon there. So each table had their own school spirit. So we hired, get this, over, last count, over 47 teachers this year alone, and still going, by the way. And you would see less teachers on these slides, folks, and I've got to be truly transparent here. If it wasn't for our online application, where we were able to get folks from Pennsylvania, Florida, all over this nation, I think we'd have more vacancies. So, uh, you know, I've got to thank the HR staff for, you know, being with me through all of the winter and the spring to get that developed. And we were able to net quite a few teachers this summer. And we, we got after it in March. And thank you to Mr. Stokes's budget that we were able to publicize our vacancies in EdWeek in colleges for free and also for pay. So we, we were out there early. We got out there nationally, well, we were out there nationally anyway throughout the year. So with that, um, tremendous amount of work, and you, you can see in the pictures there, there were a lot of teachers at that meeting yesterday. And then, um, at the lunch that everybody was talking about earlier today, there they are, celebrating in Penny's Restaurant over at the high school. celebrating in Penny's Restaurant over at the high school. And there were so many teachers, folks, that they had to sit in the buffet line outside of culinary, and then people were inside then eating and enjoying each other's company and collegiality. You can see Mr. Wallace leading the charge there as OCA was sponsoring the luncheon event. So lots of teachers that we hired this year, and lots of work behind all that for every hire. We hired four new admin, 25 classified, still going. We still have some vacancies, but it's not as bad as it sounds. We have to fill four admin positions, two at the high school, two VP positions, one for Mr. Kearns' former job, for risk manager, and of course, Mr. Mariani. And then we still have 13 teachers, and that actually is lower now, we were able to snag a few through last, actually just today, I was working on them. Classified, we have about a dozen left to hire. But that, that is an all-year deal with classified, so that doesn't surprise me. That number's pretty steady. A little bit more in the summer, obviously, with retirements and such. Unfortunately, we've got to hire a couple of nurses, they're always hard to find, so I was hoping that we had some help here from the medical community to help with that. We're constantly looking for subs, so that's an all-year deal as well, and other part-time staff. We do have a number of athletic coaches still out there, and it's 11 of them right now that we're looking for. So, Mr. Cassiopa, any connections you may have in the coaching community, get them out there, we need some help. Just some really interesting stats, and I'm still trying to figure out our, our stat system on our new online application, but since March, we've had over 1,200 online applications submitted. That's phenomenal. That's easily 50% more, if not 100% more than what we had last year at this time. So that online app, of course, people can apply to maybe three or four schools at the same time, which is way easier than the other way, which was paper and killing every living animal and tree, it seemed. Total applicants, all told, it's about over 430 people, about 228 female, 128 male, 72 undeclared, they don't have to write down what they are, but they undeclared, 286 white, four black, five Asian, one Pacific Islander, three Indian, American Indians, two Alaskan natives, 39 Hispanic, and 92 undeclared. So, again, you know, it's, it's a freedom of choice thing. I can't make them fill that out as adults, it's kind of against the law, but if they want to declare their gender and their race, they can. So in my last slide, I want to do this because Casey did it earlier. I really want to thank our teacher mentors and implementation specialists, as Steve has indicated and Candy was up here, and you saw the wonderful kindergarten teachers that were speaking. There are two types of mentors in my career, the declared and the undeclared, meaning that there are informal mentors. So anyone that's been in teaching has a buddy in the system. Michelle has buddies in the system, and they may not be the formal mentors, but they're out there. And, and let me tell you, they're, they're across all staff, whether you're a nurse or administrator, or a classified staff, you've got a buddy to help you out, and usually somebody who knows the ropes, whether you're an office manager or whatever you're doing in our district, somebody's there to help you. And I got to tell you, we have a great district. People are falling all over themselves to help each other, honestly, and I see it every day. Just spectacular. So thank you to all the mentors out there, informal or formal. As Casey said, we had custodians working all summer to the bone, our healthcare staff getting our schools ready, clean, you know, spick and span, looking bright and sharp. I saw Principal Fuson's office, it was freshly painted. At one point, I was scared, I went in Monday and she just had a little folding table. I was freaking out a little bit for her. She goes, oh, it's Jose, it's fine, it's fine, I got a desk coming in. So it came in Wednesday, I think. So she's, she's fully outfitted, ready to go. And then really want to thank our administration for all the hard work this summer, very few took any long breaks. They were interviewing just about every week, I mean, if we're going to say, we were hiring like crazy, and still are. And because we're doing performance-based pretty much across the board, even through classified, those interviews are quite intense. They're not your average interview anymore. They're, they're really, and I was speaking with President Wilkie this morning, and I said, you know, we, we don't want just good, we want great. We deserve great. And our performance-based process really delineates the good enough for the great. And I can tell you, it's, it's arduous, and some of you have served on those interview panels, and thank you, it's a lot of time and effort, but behind the scenes, those administrators are doing a great job vetting the best people we can. And so, work's not done, I'm excited. Mrs. Kima got up in front of all the new teachers at PDC and said, do great things, that's why we, we have you here in our great district, and to continue to have fun, I want to echo her sentiments on that, and also let every staff member know that your interview never really ends. I mean, honestly, every day you show your best face in front of your kids at the bus stop, at, at the nurse's station, at the front counter at every office, you know, at the DO, at operations, behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, Race to the Top, SFA, you name it, we're, we're, we're showing it every day. So I'm glad that we have some of the finest staff in Nevada working for us in Carson City. And with that, that's my report.
Any questions or comments?
How are we doing with math?
You know, great question. I was hoping somebody would ask me. And we were struggling a bit, to be honest. We have the high school pretty covered, that was our, our big hotspot early in the year, and we didn't expect to get sacked so much in math until, you know, again, letters in the tent came back and there was nothing, no, no movement. End of school, all of a sudden, whammo, people started moving around. We should have had some kind of transfer system between all the districts, because I saw people going everywhere, all around us, like a storm front circling us. And we got some, they got some. Lyon County offered $5,000 just to even work for them this year, and I thought, ugh, really, you're killing me. So I complained over to the district over there and said, what are you doing over there? How'd you find that money? So anyway, we'll, we'll keep that in mind and, and see what we can do in our budget. But with regard to math, Mr. Reynolds, proactively, I knew it was coming to storm for math, so I worked with UNR and Sierra Nevada College. Initially, I had four student teachers in math that I scooped from UNR that were slated to go to Washoe County, four committed verbally, two actually came through this summer. So two went back to Washoe, unfortunately, but we've got them covered with one person who wants to get an endorsement, she has it now in social studies. She wants to pursue the math endorsement right away. She student taught at Eagle Valley, had great classroom management, was riveting in her lesson plans, probably one of our best student teachers last year. So she's coming back to long-term sub, and we, we've got some leads on, on the other vacancy, and I'm working on that, that one as we speak. We actually have a mom out there who was called by many people who are recruiting with me for that math position at the high school, and she was, is currently licensed in California, but we're working with NDE to get her endorsed ASAP for the high school. So through some aggressive maneuvers on, on our department, and with the help of everybody at the high school, including Principal Fuson, we've been on it. I mean, we're, we're constantly vigilant and still advertising, so folks, get out there on our website.
As opposed, or as maybe an adjunct to, bonus scene hires, are there districts aside of Alaska whoever helped fund college students' education in terms for research efficacy with putting in a couple, three years with the district?
Boy, yeah, there's all kinds of programs that I know of, Teach for America, of course, it's been national for a long time. There's incentives through the Department of Ed with regard to loan forgiveness if you serve in a, you know, hard-to-fill capacity. Alternative routes to licensure, again, if you, I had one of our former engineers in the business when the economy fell out from the bottom, and he had enough math credits when, I think it was my second year, that I was able to work with the Department of Ed and UNR to get him math endorsed, and now he's one of our finest math teachers. He got through the program typically three years, knocked it out in a year and a half. So he's my, he's my poster child for how to get somebody into a hard-to-fill. So there's lots of ways. Mr. Reynolds, unfortunately, fiscally, there's not a lot of incentive unless the districts have the money for it, in the pockets, obviously.
Ron?
How about our ROTC program? Everything, all, everything's positions filled, we're, we're set to go?
We're, wow, that was, that was under the wire, we, yes, we got them both from the East Coast, yeah, one from the East Coast and one from Washington State. And thanks through all the recruitment efforts of Freddie Jones and his contacts. And I learned a lot about that. I mean, it's, it's different from any other career path. But yeah, we got that sealed up pretty quickly. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? How many applications came out on paper?
That's a great question. I think my staff, we, we pointed, and we really helped them. I don't think we had any on paper, except for maybe, we still have, let me take that back, still volunteer is on paper, I'm working on that. And then we had a couple that are just primarily part-time, but not full-time stuff, all online. And actually, there was really no drama behind that, people just got on it and did it.
Great. Well, thank you and your department for getting it all done, it's pretty exciting, 74 hires in three months, it's pretty amazing.
Great staff.
Your bar just got raised. Moving on to 12, approval of consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve the, whoops, sorry. I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, G, J, and K as submitted.
Second.
Second by Laurel. All those in favor? All those opposed? Moving on to number 13, requests for future agenda items.
I don't know what the timing is, but would appreciate it if we could have a report either at the next meeting in August, or perhaps the first meeting after Labor Day about the marketing plan and what the status is on that marketing campaign, because we'd like, sure like to see that up on our webpage as soon as possible, but if Mr. Stokes or whoever administration could give us an update on that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. We are adjourned, remember that Jamie Vollmar's at eight, or at 1:00, hope to see everybody there. Have a good night and enjoy school. Let's go.